Good evening, everyone. We will call the June seventeen, two thousand and thirteen City Council meeting to order. First order of business is the roll call. Heidi.
Sasso.
Here.
Clayton.
Here.
Nordstrom.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Doyle.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Laurenti.
Here.
We have a quorum.
And now we will have our invocation, and leading us will be Senator Stan Adelstein from Synagogue of the Hills. You are welcome to participate, but not required.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you want me there or here?
There would be my...
Thank you. Baruch atah Arnoy Elohenu Malach Ha'olom. Blessed are you, Lord our God, King of the Universe. May the doors to this chamber be wide enough to welcome any who seek representation or redress. May the lights of this chamber always be so bright that nothing done or intended to be done is hidden. May the doors of this chamber be narrow enough to shut out pettiness and pride, envy and enmity. May its threshold be no stumbling block to any person regardless of station or status, yet may its threshold be high enough to bar complacency, selfishness and harshness. May the lights of this chamber be so dim that to make differences of skin color, ethnicity or life choices invisible. And above all, let us never forget that in South Dakota governance is under God, and under God, the people rule. Baruch atah Arnoy Elohenu Malach Ha'olom Shechayanu Ve'Giganu Lozman Ha'Zeh. Blessed are you, O Lord our God, King of the Universe, who has blessed us with life, sustained us, enabled us to reach this day. Amen.
We will now proceed with adopting our agenda. Are there any changes or additions to tonight's City Council agenda from staff or council Motion by Peterson, second by Roberts, to approve the agenda as is. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we now have several awards and recognitions, and we'll start with item number one, which is Veteran of the Month, Jim Hurley from Ward Three. So if Chad Lewis could join me down front. In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we are pleased to present the June two thousand and thirteen Veteran of the Month recognition to James Hurley.
James Jim Hurley was established in the United States, excuse me, enlisted in the United States Army, where he served in the Infantry Company Commander, as Infantry Company Commander during nineteen eighty-six, sixty-eight to sixty-nine. At the age of twenty-four, Jim led his troops of a hundred young men through the combat action in a dense, hot and dangerous Vietnam jungle. In Jim's humble acknowledgement, he stated, "It was an active time of ambushes, pitched battles lasting two to three days, and I didn't do anything anybody else hadn't. I just did my job. The priority was to keep each other as safe as possible, and we had a buddy system, and the buddy system was to keep it, get as many people home as possible." Jim also served at the DMZ in Korea. During Jim's years of service, he received the Silver Star, the Bronze Star and the Purple Heart. Jim Hurley is the eldest of sixteen children. Upon returning from Vietnam, Jim entered college and graduated from the South Dakota State School of Law at the University of South Dakota in Vermillion. After graduation, he served as a law clerk for Judge Andrew Bog from nineteen seventy-four to nineteen seventy-six, after which he joined the Banks McCollum Law Firm and has been a distinguished member of the partner ever since. He is recognized as an accomplished lawyer in South Dakota and has served on several state and national associations. Jim is married to Sherry and a proud father of three daughters. Having served his country with pride, honor and integrity, James Hurley is a true patriot of our community and our country, and he is most deserving of Veteran of the Month. Thank you very much for your service, sir.
Thank you very much. May I say a few words? Thank you, Mayor Sam, and thank you for that introduction, Chad. Thank you, members of the council, and Mayor Sam and your staff. You are truly the leaders of our community. We have made our home here for forty years, since nineteen seventy-four, and we've watched the progress, at least over the years. We've raised our family here. This is a good place to live, a good place to raise a family. The schools are excellent. I honor the police force and the military people who live here, and the firemen who serve us and who serve us well. This is a wonderful place to live. I thank you for your service. Every day, and I look at this agenda, and I say, oh, my gosh, there's a lot of study, a lot of thought, and a lot of leadership goes into this to make this work. This is not just leadership by committee, this is leadership by leaders, and we appreciate that very much. It's true, I served this great country forty years ago, forty-four years ago, I guess it was, in Vietnam, and I want you to know, we did a good job. And the boys who served with me did a wonderful job. We had ten Huey helicopters, we went a lot of different places, we did what we were asked to do. And by honoring me, I want you to know that you honor those who served in our military and who now serve in our military, twenty-four hours a day around the globe, serving freedom and serving this great country. And also, here at home, when you hear that fire siren go, think of those people that got on the wagon and went into harm's way. When you hear the police cars go, get over and let them go past, and think about those people who are doing the duty that needs to be done to keep the law and order in a city of this size. And understanding that this recognition of my service recognizes their service, I will accept that. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, we now have several employee awards, and we'll start with Cliff Peterson from the Rapid City Police Department. Is Cliff here tonight? Okay. Larry Rose here tonight? Come on up, Larry. Chief. Larry, we want to thank you for your many years of service to our community, and it's with regret that you're retiring, and we wish you all the best. And Chief has a few words to say, and he also needs to sign your certificate as well.
Well, Larry, we're sad to see you go. Larry started with our department in March of nineteen ninety, and worked as a police officer, spent some time in our traffic section, and then was really forced to leave the sworn law enforcement service in two thousand and eight due to a back injury. And lucky for us, we had a new job open in the PD where he could be a licensed compliance inspector, and in Larry's case, that meant fingerprinting people for background checks if they were teachers or federal employees or prospective city employees. So he did fingerprinting, and he did background checks and other related duties, and he's one of the few people in our business that earned his own wages while he was doing it. So he's done that since two thousand and eight, and it was a big relief for us to be able to do that. So, but Larry is a dedicated public servant and a great guy, and we're just sorry to see you leave, and we're also happy for you to turn the page, help you turn the page and see what lies beyond. Congratulations.
I appreciate it. thirty of two thousand and thirteen, and we're going to miss you as well and wish you the best in your retirement. And Chief's been rehearsing all day what to say, and I'll turn the microphone over to him.
Yeah. And Mike is, Mike is one of our favorite guys because he came to us, he completely surprised us when he showed up on our door and applied because he's got a advanced mathematics degree. He's, you know, he, at the time in nineteen ninety-one, we were getting these, you know, ex-bar bouncers and big husky guys, and Mike's just an average guy. And we couldn't figure out what, what made him want to do this job, and so he started doing it and came on just at the right time where we were trying to get into community policing. We were in a several-year transition from traditional policing to a community-oriented policing model, and Mike was one of our first dedicated community policing officers in the West Boulevard area. And he went door-to-door and met as many people as he could. He helped the neighbors handle their own problems. He took a lot of pride in that, and he, he earned a lot of goodwill for the city, and he's done a great job. And every day, you can turn on the police radio and hear Mike Lang's voice doing the same high-quality work that he's done for the last couple of decades. And now he, now he leaves and goes into retirement to find out what's there, and so just to make us feel better, we've hired his son, Luke, to take his place, and hopefully
We have our monthly award from the Rapid City Beautification Committee, and this award
the uniforms and everything will fit. But congratulations, Mike.
is going to Rosemary St. Pierre from Ward Two. Rosemary, if you could come up, and if our Ward Two council members, Richie and Steve, could come up, please. And the floor is yours, Kathy.
The City Beautification Committee started a Yard of the Month several years ago, and we give those awards June through October. We like to have anyone that will, if they want to nominate themselves or if they want to nominate a neighbor, please do so. The information is on the city website under the Parks and Rec Department, is also is available at the Parks and Rec Office on West Boulevard. I happened to see Rosemary's yard on my way over to South Junior High for basketball, and it took me a couple of different tries before I found her at home, but I thoroughly, she lives on the corner of Third and Mead, and they do a wonderful job in their yard, not only in the summertime, but in the wintertime. Husband puts up fantastic lights, even though that has nothing to do with Yard of the Month award. It was, it was a nice surprise to see that as well. So along with receiving the certificate from the mayor, she also will receive a twenty-five dollar gift certificate from Noctals to use to help improve her garden even more.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Now is the time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on any issue not on the agenda except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. And we'll first go to Calvin Luke. Calvin, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm here to voice my opinion in a disagreement with the board's decision to bar A-plus payee services as well as A-plus ego payee services, excuse me, from using the library for our meetings and to get our money from our payees. That is a violation of our civil rights, and we feel that we are being discriminated against on this matter. And I am in contact with the Department of Justice, the Civil Rights Division. Also, I'm going to be contacting the American Civil Liberties Union in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, the Dakota Chapter, and I'm also contacting the Department of Labor's Civil Rights Division in Pierce, South Dakota, as well as my congressional delegation to voice my concern with this matter.
Thank you, Calvin.
May I speak some more?
You may. You have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, if you read your Bibles, you are not to judge lest you be judged yourselves on the day of judgment. For the day that you use that judgment, it is going to be measured back unto you. That is found in Matthew, chapter one, chapter seven, verses one through five, and I would strongly recommend that everyone read it and take what it says. We are being judged as due to our disabilities, and that is wrong and is in violation of our civil rights.
Thank you. And thank you for stopping into my office today, and Jeff Barber and the library are looking into your concerns. If you don't hear back in a few days, if you call my office. Okay. We'll now go to Bonnie Redden, under general public comment. Good evening, Bonnie.
Good evening, Sam. Hello, everyone. My name is Bonnie Redden. I live in Ward Four. Today, I attended the Compass Meeting, as I do most all their meetings. By ordinance, the auditor is to have access to all the information concerning the finances of this city. This has been denied on some of the most flimsy excuses I've ever heard in my life, and I've heard a lot. You on the council seem to have forgotten that Compass is your committee, not the mayor's committee. It does not matter how the mayor feels about your committee or what you want your committee to do or not to do. It is totally irrelevant. All this delay should be laid right on his lap. He has done everything to delay the implementation of this committee, which as far as I'm concerned, would be the saving of this poor, beaten downtown. The Finance Department should not be the clearinghouse for all the departments. This is not good business practices, people. Look into it. This town needs the whole system gone into in-depth. You have the perfect opportunity, and nobody's doing anything. Three months ago, you put out a really nice report, of which I have read every word. I think I must be the only person in town that does, because everybody I ask what they think about the Compass Committee, they don't know who you are. I don't know how you can get people interested, but that's your job, not mine. This is my big concern. Rapid City generates one hundred and ninety million dollars a year. This is without any of the sales taxes, the property taxes and the other taxes. I want an accounting of every single solitary penny of taxpayer money that is spent. I want to know where it came from and where it went. As I have stated before, the only people who fear an audit are people with something to hide. My question is this: What are we hiding?
Thank you, Bonnie. The answer is nothing. We'll go to Mary Jo Farrington. Mary, good evening.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Mary Jo, and I'm wearing my Uranium Glow T-shirt. Hopefully, I won't look this yellow. The T-shirt says, "We are the water we drink." And what I'm here tonight is to ask the city council to see if you can assume some leadership and take a position against in situ uranium mining. There's many reasons, and I can't obviously go into all of them, but Rapid City and the Black Hills is in a fight for its most, one of its most precious resources, and that's clean water. And I just want to read you one aspect of it. Power Tech, the company that is requesting the rights, the water rights for in situ uranium mining, are requesting to use twelve point ninety-six million gallons per day for twenty years. Rapid City uses eleven point three-five million gallons a day. So they're basically asking for the rights to use the same amount of water that Rapid City is. If Power Tech bought the water from Rapid City, it would have to pay one million dollars a year for the amount it seeks, but the company expects to get it free. And we don't want in situ uranium mining. There are so many possible risks beyond the fact that they're going to use huge amounts of water, and we are in a long-term drought, and so we hope that maybe the city council, by coming out and publicly saying, "We do not support in situ uranium mining," can help, help the citizens understand more about what is really going on. So thank you.
Thank you, Mary Jo. We do not have any additional speaker request forms for general public comment. Did I miss anyone? Seeing none, we'll move on. Can we have a motion to open public comment for items four through twenty-nine, please? Motion by Peterson, second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I have one speaker request form for items four through twenty-nine, and that's item twenty, from Brian Irvin, representing Sioux Falls Tower and Communications. Good evening, Brian.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I reviewed, or we visited this in the Public Works Committee. I'm here for any comment or any questions you have.
Thank you. We do not have any further speaker request forms for items four through twenty-nine. Do we have a motion to close public comment? Will be to item twenty in just a little bit. If it's polled, we'll call on you.
Cool.
We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now on consent, items four through twenty-nine. Would anyone like, anyone on the council like to poll any of these items for separate consideration? Items four through twenty-nine. Ron Sasso.
Thank you, Mayor. Items nineteen and twenty.
Items nineteen and twenty. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number twelve.
Okay, so far we have twelve, nineteen and twenty. Anything else? Do we have a motion to approve the balance? Motion by Doyle, second by Roberts, to approve four through twenty-nine with the exceptions of twelve, nineteen and twenty for separate consideration. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item twelve, and we'll go to Richie Nordstrom, Public Works Vice Chair. Richie.
Thank you, Mayor. Item twelve is to authorize Mayor and Finance to sign Amendment Number One to Agreement Number six, one, three, five, one, seven between the city of Rapid City and the South Dakota Department of Transportation for Sixth Street pedestrian crossing on Omaha Street. And I move for approval.
Motion by Nordstrom, second by Roberts. And we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take this opportunity, since it was talking about the promenade, to let our citizens know that the project is going well, and kudos to Destination Rapid City. They had two-story write-ups in the month of June. The first write-up was in the Rapid City Area Chamber of Commerce investment report. There's a great story in there, and it lists all the bands that are going to be playing at the Main Street Square on Thursday nights while summer nights is going on. And then, even bigger, is the South Dakota Municipalities Magazine. There's a great story with a lot of history about Main Street Square, and the story is called "The Story Behind the Square," and it absolutely is fantastic, and I would recommend anyone to go ahead and read up on it. The other thing I wanted to take this opportunity is we've also had, as city council members, quite a few comments about summer nights. We've had two nights of it now, or two weeks of it, and it definitely is a hit with the citizens, and it definitely has outgrown downtown. It is taking longer to set up, and that is good news, but I believe next year, we can all look forward to the summer nights festivities.
Thank you, Mary Jo. We do not have any additional speaker request forms for general public comment. Did I miss anyone? Seeing none, we'll move on. Can we have a motion to open public comment for items 4 through 29, please? Motion by Peterson, second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I have one speaker request form for items 4 through 29, and that's item 20, from Brian Irvin, representing Sioux Falls Tower and Communications. Good evening, Brian.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I reviewed, or we visited this in the Public Works Committee. I'm here for any comment or any questions you have.
Thank you. We do not have any further speaker request forms for items 4 through 29. Do we have a motion to close public comment? Will be to item 20 in just a little bit. If it's polled, we'll call on you.
Cool.
We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now on consent, items 4 through 29. Would anyone like, anyone on the council like to poll any of these items for separate consideration? Items 4 through 29. Ron Sasso.
Thank you, Mayor. Items 19 and 20.
Items 19 and 20. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12.
Okay. So far, we have 12, 19, and 20. Anything else? Do we have a motion to approve the balance? Motion by Doyle, second by Roberts, to approve 4 through 29, with the exceptions of 12, 19, and 20 for separate consideration. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 12, and we'll go to Richie Nordstrom, Public Works Vice Chair. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 12 is to authorize Mayor and Finance to sign Amendment Number 1 to Agreement Number 613517 between the City of Rapid City and the South Dakota Department of Transportation for 6th Street pedestrian crossing on Omaha Street. And I move for approval.
Motion by Nordstrom, second by Roberts. And we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take this opportunity, since it was talking about the promenade, to let our citizens know that the project is going well. And kudos to Destination Rapid City. They had two-story write-ups in the month of June. The first write-up was in the Rapid City Area Chamber of Commerce investment report. There's a great story in there, and it lists all the bands that are going to be playing at the Main Street Square on Thursday nights while summer nights is going on. And then, even bigger, is the South Dakota Municipalities Magazine. There's a great story with a lot of history about Main Street Square, and the story is called "The Story Behind the Square." And it absolutely is fantastic, and I would recommend anyone to go ahead and read up on it. The other thing I wanted to take this opportunity is, we've also had, as city council members, quite a few comments about summer nights. We've had two nights of it now, or two weeks of it, and it definitely is a hit with the citizens, and it definitely has outgrown downtown. It is taking longer to set up, and that is good news, but I believe next year, we can all look forward to the summer nights festivities, to move to Memorial Park and enjoy the walk between downtown and the Memorial Park band stage, and use that promenade that's coming into existence. So, thank you, and I am in support of this.
Thank you, Amanda. We'll go to Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to reiterate for the public one more time, just that this crossing is not costing anything for the citizens of Rapid City. It's being paid for by Destination Rapid City. And just want to make sure that's understood once again, because I get a lot of phone calls and emails about it, and some people asking me why we're changing the crosswalk yet again. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chad. Any further discussion on item 12? The motion is for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 19.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 19 is to acknowledge the feasibility study and recommendation on the installation of sidewalks on the both sides of Highway 44 from La Crosse Street to Western Dakota Technical Institute, and authorize staff to pursue grant funding options. And I'll yield the floor.
Do we have a motion or discussion?
I have a motion.
Okay. We have a motion by Scott for approval. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Second by Laurenti. And we'll go to Ron Sasso.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, this is something that I, I had the opportunity to visit with Dale Tech about the grant funding, and I think it's excellent that the city is looking into this. And the timeline on the grant funding, he does feel we have a pretty good chance at getting awarded that. And the application would be going in, as I understand it, in March, and probably would be hearing something by around June. My thinking on this is that if we do not get that grant funding, I do believe, as this is a priority area for sidewalks, that this is something that really should be revisited come next July, if the grant funding is not approved. And there again, the primary area, looking at that corner from Campbell to Western Dakota Tech and the East Side Library. So, I just thought that it was worthwhile pointing those two things out, and, and I'm hoping that we get that grant funding, and if not, I hope that it does, that we do end up getting that installed in the future. Thank you.
Any further discussion on item 19? We have a motion to acknowledge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 20.
Item 20 is to approve a request from Greg Snyder for the exception to waive the requirement to install sidewalk for the property located along Emerson Lane, with the stipulation that a waiver of right to protest is signed. And I move to approve.
Motion by Nordstrom and a second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing, oh, we do. Ron Sasso.
Thank you. This is, this is another situation when we're looking at from the sidewalks, bike and pedestrian master plan. I know we talked about this in Public Works, again, visiting with staff. The reason that they recommend denial of that waiver is, you know, twofold. One, we are looking at, as part of the bond, redoing Seeger Drive, and we'll have sidewalks in that area. When we look at trying to get sidewalks put in, typically, it's an uphill battle, and there's always, well, there's, there are no sidewalks in that area. This would be one of those places to start, and that's why I believe that we should be looking at getting the sidewalk installed, because that is an area that we will have more construction in the future, and I hope to see that. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. As I recall in our committee meeting, that we talked about this specific site as being not adjacent to Seeger or Dais, and this would be more or less in the area of what I would call an island to start a sidewalk project, and the feasibility for the connections is, just isn't there right now. Perhaps in the future, so that's the reason why we're requesting the warp to be applied to this. Thank you, Mayor. I'll yield.
Thank you, Richie. Any further discussion? The motion is to approve. Ron Sasso.
And just one other point, looking at this, like, for instance, looking at the sidewalks up by the mall, that was about a 20-year project. So knowing that it is going to be harder in the future, and that's, that's why I think it's worth bringing up and discussing that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one no from Ron Sasso. We are now on non-consent items, items 30 through 44. Can we have a motion to open public comment, please? We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public comment is now open. We do not have any public comment. We have a motion to close public comment. We have a motion by Scott and a second by Lewis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now on item 30. Amanda.
First reading, ordinance 5932, and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning from general agricultural district to public district for property generally described as being located west of North Elkvale Road and south of Country Road. I'd like to make a motion to approve in conjunction with the associated comprehensive plan amendment, and I'd like to retain the floor.
Motion by Scott, second by Roberts.
May I ask a question of Brett Limbaugh, Mayor?
You may.
Brett, just for clarification purposes, when, in reading the attached documents to this agenda, there is a line in the documentation that said, that describes this property by the applicant as being proposed as the Dakota Fields Soccer Complex. Has this field actually been named at this point, or can we have this put back into the Proposed City Soccer Complex?
I don't think there's a formal name for it yet, so I think you have some latitude.
If we can make that correctionman, correction, I'd appreciate it.
We can take that as an amendment?
I'll second.
I'd like to offer that as an amendment, and we'll take, and we have a second.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
So, Amanda Scott has offered a motion, and we have a second to amend the motion on the floor to change the name back to Opposed City Soccer Complex instead of Dakota Fields. We'll vote on the amendment only. Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion's amended. Any further discussion on the amended motion?
Thank you, Mayor.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 31.
First reading, ordinance number 5933, and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning from general agricultural district to general commercial district for property generally described as being located on the southeast corner of Tatonka Road and Harley Drive intersection. I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, second by Roberts, to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
First reading, ordinance number 5934, and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning from general agricultural district to general commercial district for property generally described as being located north of I-90, east of Exit 55. I'd like to make a motion to approve and retain the floor.
We have a motion for approval and a second by Nordstrom, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to bring up some public information. This basically is rezoning from general agricultural district, and as far as our zoning, it is totally different than the classification for property taxes. But I know that there's been a lot of property taxes and a lot of discussion with the agricultural property, and I know that it's going to be a huge tax year. So I just wanted to revisit what the Equalization Board did for property values in March, and I don't know if it's been finalized yet, but I believe in June it was. I know that my personal assessment went up 7%. The assessed value on my property went up 7%. Checking with other people, I think it was a general consensus as far as residential. I'm not really sure about agricultural or commercial and industrial properties. But just to give you a rough idea, on a house that is $100,000 assessed value, the taxes for this year would have been, for the city's portion alone, $334.40. With just that 7% increase in the assessed value, it changes, leaving the mill levy alone, the city's portion of taxes, to $357.81, or a difference of $23.41. And that's without any CPI or any increase in mill levy or anything else. So, as we come up to budget, just to let the citizens know, just to also give credit, or credits due, to the schools in the county, the current county tax on that $100,000 value would be $894.70. With that 7% increase in the assessed value, it raises it to $957.33, or a difference of $62.63. And for the county's portion, at the current $100,000 assessed value, it is $456.90. With that 7% increase to $107,000 assessed value, it raises it to $488.88, or a difference of $31.98. And by taking all three of just those taxing entities, let alone library or state fair or anything else, just those three entities would have an increase of $118.2 for the year, just by having the assessed value increased. Just trying to keep our citizens aware, because it's going to be a rocky year. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Good discussion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Is that the one I'm on, Mayor? Thank you. An ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning from no use to general commercial district for property generally described as being located north of I-90, east of Exit 55. I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, second by Laurenti. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 34.
First reading, ordinance number 5936, and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning from medium-density residential district to light industrial district for property generally described as being located on the south side of North Plaza Drive, approximately 450 feet east of the intersection of Fountain Plaza Drive and North Plaza Drive. I make a motion to approve in conjunction with the associated comprehensive plan amendment.
Motion by Scott, second by Lewis. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 35 is to authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign partial releases, two of them, of agreements between the City of Rapid City and Walgar Development Corporation. The reasons are for lots 1 through 4 of the Good Samaritan subdivision upon receipt of payment. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Scott, second by Bonnie Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 35A.
Authorize mayor and finance officer to sign an agreement with RCS Construction for the emergency repair of a water main in the amount of $54,388. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Scott, second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? Just so everyone knows, this particular item did not go through a committee. It was an emergency that came up last week, and it was added directly to the council agenda prior to publication, but it was, it did not go through the committee process. Terry, can you briefly describe where this emergency was located and, and the status of this issue?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is located on the east end of East Mead Street. It's a water main that the city owns and maintains. During the big rain event we had a week and a half ago, it actually exposed that waterline where it crosses underneath the Mead Channel there. So, it did not break the water main, but it is exposed right now, so this is just going to allow us to get in there and get it lowered back under the channel.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bids? Tracy?
I'm not sure. Let's see if I don't want to run it. And try that. Okay, I want this. Minimize that. Are you using the document feeder or the computer? Document feeder? Go. There you go. There are two bids for this evening, June 17. The first one, item number 36, is two 2013 truck specifications for the Rapid City Police Department. There was one bid received from McKee Ford Lincoln. Each unit would be $27,118 for a total bid of $54,236. The recommendation is for approval.
Motion by Peterson, second by Doyle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next?
The next item is for two 2014 Rapid City Police Department pursuit-rated all-wheel-drive SUVs. Again, there was only one bid received from McKee Ford Lincoln. Each unit price would be $31,109 for a total bid of $62,218, and the recommendation is for approval.
Motion by Nordstrom, second by Doyle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on alcoholic beverage license applications, items 38 through 44. Do we have a motion to approve those items?
Mr. President.
Motion by Peterson, second by Roberts, to approve 38 through 44. Any comments from police department or finance? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now on public hearing, items 45 through 55. We have a motion to open public hearing.
So, Luke?
We have a motion by Scott and a second by Sasso. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do not have any speaker request forms? Did I miss anyone? All right. We have one speaker request form, and this is on items 54 and 55. We recognize Hanny Shaffey. Good evening, Hanny.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Hanny Shaffey with Dream Design International. Items 54 and 55 are presenting the owners, and I'm here to answer any questions, and I have a very informative and detailed presentation, if you wish to listen to it, which may address some of your questions as your questions come up, come forward. I will wait with my presentation until your questions come up out. That way, I could limit my presentation to answer your questions, or if you wish, I could proceed with the presentation.
Sounds like the consensus is to wait.
Okay. Thank you. That's good. Thanks.
We do not have any further speaker request forms. We have a motion to close public hearing.
So, maybe?
We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now on consent public hearing, items, items 45 through 51. Do we have a motion to approve all of these?
So, maybe I'm second.
We have a motion by Roberts and a second by Peterson to approve items 45 through 51. Anybody, anybody like to poll any of these for separate consideration or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on non-consent public hearing, items, items 50 through 50, through 55. Item 52, Richie.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 52 is a request by the City of Rapid City for an amendment to the comprehensive plan to change the land use designation from residential to public for property, property generally described as being located west of North Elkvale Road and south of Country Road, and I move to approve.
Motion by Richie, second by Amanda Scott. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 53.
A request by Jake Borger for an amendment to the comprehensive plan to change the land use designation from residential to industrial for property generally described as being located on the south side of North Plaza Drive, east of the intersection of Fountain Plaza Drive and North Plaza Drive, and I move to approve.
Motion by Nordstrom, second by Lewis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Opposed, motion carries. Item 54, Richie.
Thank you, Mayor. A request by Dream Design International Incorporated for Dennis Zanstra Real Estate Holdings for resolution creating tax increment District 74, property generally described as being located at south and west of Elk's Country Estates, north and south of Elkvale Road, and east of South Dakota Highway 79. I move to continue this item for two weeks.
Motion by Nordstrom, second by Lewis to continue this item for two weeks. That would be to the July 1 city council meeting. Any discussion? Motion is to continue. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 55.
Number 55, a request by Dream Design International Incorporated for Dennis Zantra Real Estate Holdings LLC for the tax increment number 74, project plan for property generally described as being located south and west of Elk's Country Estate, north and south of Elkvale Road, and east of South Dakota Highway 79. I move to continue for two weeks to the July 1 meeting.
Motion by Nordstrom, second by Roberts to continue to July 1 city council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Bill list. Tracy.
Second.
We have a motion?
There's no changes for what's presented, so the total bill list is $6,549,789.68.
Yeah, we have a motion by Laurenti and a second by Lewis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a motion to adjourn. Motion by Scott, second by Peterson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned, 7:20 PM. Good evening, everyone.